Okay, I'm gonna call the study session to order. It's two forty-five. So let's get started.
Okay, Mayor and Council for the study session, we'll start with our first goal organization. And first up.
Okay, I'm gonna call the study session to order. It's two forty-five. So let's get started.
Okay, Mayor and Council.
Okay.
Mayor, would you like me to call roll call?
Yes, please call roll call.
Alrighty, thank you. Counselor Bossmans. Mayor Buell. Counselor Woodruff.
Here.
Mayor Protem Yazi.
Here.
And Counselor Yusef.
Here.
Okay, we'll start with organizational stewardship, the financial services monthly report. Devin Schmidt or Elliot Fitz, our budget manager.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Council. This is the monthly financial update from the financial department. As always, we like to start with our mission. We provide outstanding services and experiences for the entire community. And our vision, a multi-generational community which is authentic, diverse, thriving, and environmentally responsible. So look forward to talking with you today about how we're accomplishing this. To start, our monthly sales tax forecast budget to actuals, we are coming in above our forecast. So revenues for June were eight percent above our forecast and they were above June in twenty twenty-three by three point seven percent. So that is a really good thing that we are coming in above where we had projected for revenues. On the general fund projected revenues to actuals, we are still just a little bit below what we had been projecting. Most of that is still due to that intergovernmental revenues where it can be a little tough to predict exactly when some of those transfers are gonna happen between the agencies. But we are coming up to where we had predicted and the largest portion of our revenues into the general fund is sales tax. So with that being above budget, we are looking good. And we'll continue to follow up on all the intergovernmental transfers to make sure that we get what we had budgeted for. On the general fund budget to actual expenses, we are still just a little bit below where we had projected seasonally. Which again is a good thing, being below budget on expenses, generally speaking is a very good thing. So we'll continue to monitor that to make sure that we are spending the funds and accomplishing the goals and services that we had set out to do at the beginning of the year. But generally speaking, again, being below budget on expenses is a good thing. On the enterprise funds, here we are seeing a little bit more revenue fluctuation. A lot of that is because of the loop fares, which had the lodgers tax transfer based on the council determination fund from last year. And additionally, we had, you can see in the graph, as we get into the second half of the year, there's a lot more variance month to month. And it can just be a little bit tough to predict on when exactly some of those revenues are gonna come in in one month or the next. So it is something that we're monitoring, but it's not something that we are particularly, particularly concerned about as of right now. In the last two years, you can see that it did start the, by dipping just a little bit. And when we do these forecasts, it had kind of averaged out that variance. So again, it is something that we are monitoring, but not particularly concerned about as of right now. On the enterprise fund budget to actuals on the expense side, we are keeping expenses lower than projected. So again, generally a good thing, revenues are outpacing expenses. But again, we are monitoring to make sure that we are providing the services that it's set out to do. On the capital revenues, again, a lot of this has to do with the transfer to the capital project funds as the projects are completed. So a lot of the variance does get evened out as we book the actual expenses to the projects as they're completed. And a lot of the project variance is gonna be, is a little bit tough to predict on exactly when we're gonna get those invoices from the contractors. And that sort of thing, and they can be large invoices all at once that we will pay accordingly. But don't know exactly when those projects are gonna complete and then that corresponding transfer happen. On the actuals, one big success story is the acquisition of Buckley Park. You will notice a pretty large deviation, but still within our projected variance for the expenses on the capital fund. But that is for the Buckley Park acquisition, which was out of the two thousand and five fund. So we're very happy to be able to do that and have the funds available for that. But just as we were talking about, we don't know exactly when those expenses are gonna hit sometimes. And using these seasonally adjusted forecasts, we just don't know that Buckley is gonna be purchased in June, for example. And for some of these larger capital projects, we will see large variances like that. And as long as we can explain them, we are pretty happy with where we're sitting. But the open space acquisition was a line item in the two thousand and five budget that had been accumulating for several years so that we had the funds available to purchase Buckley when it became available. And that was the, that was the purpose of that line item, excuse me. So when we're looking at historic use of the funds, we had purposefully built up a little bit of a fund balance there so that we had funds available when these bigger projects came. And just a quick wrap up, we have kicked off the twenty twenty-five budget internally. We will have a capital project presentation at the next study session that we're looking forward to present to you all. A lot of those have been to Fab already and we have a few more going. But for the most part, we are really excited to present you all the capital projects. The audit is complete and we're still always working with the auditors, but the major portion of that work is done. For fleet and facility, the community development and engineering AC project, which was brought to council earlier this year, that has been completed in time for the AC to be going before the major heat spikes in the summer. We've got four new buses in expected to be in fleet by mid-August. So that is actually just a little bit ahead of schedule on where, when we anticipated getting those budget, or when we anticipated getting those buses. So we're really excited about that, considering that we did have, and we continue to have a backlog from COVID for replacing the fleet. And in the same vein, five new Chevy Colorado's that went to various departments that are now in service. So we are working at chipping away at that COVID backlog. We're all really excited on everything finance-wise.
I have a question.
Yeah.
When do, how do we determine when we get new buses?
I'm sorry, what was that?
How do we determine when we get new buses in our fleet?
Yeah, so we have a replacement cycle when we actually purchase a new asset. We look at what that asset is if we've had previous like assets and we set a life cycle of that. Based on that is when we're targeting to replace buses, any, really anything in the fleet. It has a life cycle from the onset of us adding it to the fleet.
Do you know what the life cycle is for a bus?
I don't off the top of my head. I know it's a little bit shorter than some of the things like the Chevy Colorado's because they get so much more use.
Right.
But we can certainly find that out.
I was just curious how we make those determinations. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, thank you very much.
Next up is our diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging cross-functional team monthly report with Kyle DeLamora and Spencer Snar.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem and Council. Also, as I said, Kyle DeLamora with the DEIB CFT. I'm joined by Spencer Snar, who's also one of our teammates. We're very excited to be here before you today to share our indigenous land acknowledgement, which I'll refer to as an ILA, and our recommendations on its use. We're here to inform you on the broader process of how we arrived here. And this is all in preparation for consideration of adoption at upcoming council meeting. So the Indigenous Land Acknowledgement and our recommendation align with the city's newly developed strategic plan goals of organizational stewardship and engaged and informed community. The ILA supports the organizational stewardship strategic plan goal to foster strong community group partnerships, ensure the commitment to the organization's DEIB efforts. The engagement process that we employed throughout this project utilized a systematic approach to community engagement, which supports the plan goal of engaged and informed community. So some background on the product project. From our collective research and our subsequent presentations to you, we know that ILAs are opportunities to engage within a community's historical context, while recognizing that indigenous peoples are the original stewards of the land. By engaging in an ILA, we want to create broader public awareness of this community's history. We want to offer recognition and respect to the original stewards of the land in this community and inspire ongoing action and partnerships. This work did begin in early of twenty twenty-three and involved a robust engagement process that included broad outreach within our community and region to learn how an ILA could bring the most meaning and action. So just a project timeline, I'll just highlight some key dates here. As I said, we began in twenty twenty-three with direction from council to research and plan the initial outreach efforts. Through December of twenty twenty-three, we began and actually completed the engagement process that involved reaching out to cultural preservation departments of the tribes with ties to the region. And from those conversations, a draft of the ILA and its recommended uses was completed. By the end of that year, we were seeking community members to participate in a focus group to provide feedback on the effort up to that point. By February of this year, a focus group of diverse community members convened for two meetings. The first meeting involved an intro to the project and solicited feedback on the language. The second meeting involved identifying the meaningful uses of the ILA. And in twenty twenty, in June of twenty twenty-four, we finalized the language. And just so you know how that was accomplished, it involved formulating two drafts from the feedback we received, which was then shared back with all the groups and the partners we made throughout the process to give us this final track that we've landed on. A little bit further into public, whoa, hey. Public engagement, sorry, I got ahead of myself. As I mentioned, our public engagement process was a robust one. We started with the information gathering by utilizing natural resources such as the native governance center and also with local organizations that engage in ILAs such as Fort Lewis College and NAR. And that's to better understand their process and journey. Next, we embarked on our initial outreach to the indigenous tribes with ties to the region. And that began a process of back and forth communication that led to the informed conversations that brought light to stories of the land and the ceremonial places that were significant to each tribe. Lastly, we utilized the city's community engagement strategy to form a focus group that was instrumental in shaping this project. My slides are a little out of order, so I'm just gonna go back here. Sorry about that. And just to highlight the importance of feedback throughout this engagement process, they were, the focus group was very instrumental in shaping the project. They were very specific in what they wanted to see and conversely, what they didn't feel was necessary. They asked us to refer to indigenous peoples in the present tense. They wanted us to be specific about the atrocities that were faced and that the overall voice of the ILA should be direct and assertive. That same approach was taken on the recommendations of use. We do have That same approach was taken on the recommendations of use. We do have a few listed here, but I'm going to hand this over to Spencer. She's going to get into those in a little bit. Further in the presentation.
Thank you, Kyle. Okay, so. It is worth repeating that our cross-function team has been working on this project with input from many collaborators since early 2023. Aspects like the length of the acknowledgement, which I will read in just a moment, were a very important consideration from everyone involved. So with that. I will now read you the proposed Indigenous land acknowledgement. This is a call to honor and respect Indigenous sovereignty and self-determination. As residents and visitors of Durango, we are called upon to educate ourselves about the history and cultural heritage of the land we inhabit. The city of Durango is situated on the ancestral homelands and territories of the Newt, Ut, Hickory, Apache, Apache, Pueblos of New Mexico, Hopi-Sinom, Hopi, and Dene, Navajo nations. The original stewards of this land were forcibly removed and exposed to countless atrocities by the United States government, including repeatedly broken treaties, forced assimilation, the tragic legacy of Indian boarding schools and the loss of ancestral homelands. We recognize lasting generational trauma exists within Native communities today. We affirm the continuing importance of ancestral sites to descendant communities as integral to the living cultural landscape. This acknowledgement only becomes meaningful when combined with accountable relationships and informed actions. May this serve as a step towards inclusion, reconciliation and reparations. Now let's move into recommendations for use. Short-term recommendations are ways in which we can easily and feasibly fold and meaningful action into the ILA. They also help us spread awareness and purpose of this project. The recommendations include to read the acknowledgement allowed to start city council meetings, engage Durango forums and project-specific public engagement meetings. To print the ILA on key City of Durango publications, including Parks and Recreation Enrichment Guide and the Lake Night Horse brochure, among others. Add the acknowledgement to the city website footer along with a webpage dedicated to the ILA project as well as information and resources about local tribes. Add the acknowledgement to cultural displays at the Durango La Plata County Airport. And feature the acknowledgement on Linktree and the city's social media bios. You might notice that some of these recommendations involve multiple city departments, which was intentional. And our CFT is happy for the support that we have received from department heads on these ideas. Next up is midterm recommendations. Midterm recommendations require more planning and resources. So it's worth noting that we're currently factoring in some of these expenses into our 2025 budgeting process. Like the short-term recommendations, these were identified by the focus group as important next steps and priorities to help make the ILA more meaningful. The recommendations include posting the ILA on plaques and community rooms, community spaces and in-town trailheads. Integrating the ILA into the onboarding process for City of Durango staff. What might be new information for some of our employees could lead to deeper learning and meaningful engagement for others. Recognition of Indigenous holidays specific to tribes in the region. There are a lot of ways to approach this, but we would like to highlight that we could bring awareness to issues affecting tribal communities and spotlight events occurring in Indigenous communities. And this could be an exciting way to connect communities and share important news and events. And finally, stay open to feedback and evaluate the ILA after a year and ultimately into the future. So finally, we are including our long-term recommendations, even though we are not asking you to consider them at this time. These big ideas were identified by the focus group as the most impactful ways the ILA could build accountable relationships and inspire informed actions. I hope that mentioning them will plant a seed in the minds of everyone present here today because they are goals that will take more time, more collaboration and more resources to actualize. Ultimately, these ideas are ways in which future councils can implement the ILA. As I mentioned in the previous slide, we will be seeking feedback and evaluating this project as the years pass. This ensures that our land acknowledgement does not become stale or outdated. Instead, it will change and grow to fit the needs of our community and the goals of our council now and in the future. Long-term recommendations can include creating a walking tour or an interpretive guide. This is valuable because it gets people moving around the community. Seeing something familiar like a building, a trailhead, a neighborhood with a new lens that would reveal a more complete picture of the history and significance of this place. Seeking out tribal relation specialists as a city resource. This could look like hiring a person or a group of people to help facilitate ongoing partnerships and collaborations between the city, the tribes, the community. This action was identified as being an important step towards building and maintaining strong relationships. And finally, creating educational campaigns and cultural celebrations. Some departments are already working on things like this, but there are always opportunities to expand and do more. So with that, on behalf of the DEIB CFT, Kyle and I appreciate the opportunity to present to you today. This presentation is intended to be informational and to prepare you for an upcoming resolution where council will have the opportunity to adopt the ILA and its short-term and midterm recommendations for use. So thank you for your time and attention. We'll now give you some time to consider and we can answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Kyle and Spencer. It's a real impressive step forward and I'll open up to questions.
I'm not able, okay, there, I was able to get it to go to green. Can you remind me who served on the committee for the ILA?
The focus group?
Yeah, the focus group. Thank you. And how many people we had?
We had seven members serving on the focus group. They met over two sessions. That was led by our community outreach specialist.
Great.
Engagement. Thank you. I can tell you a little bit about their backgrounds. Everyone serving on in the focus group was a current tribal member, a full-time resident of the Four Corners area. They had backgrounds in DEIB and social justice work or training.
Excellent. Thank you so much. That's helpful.
They were really helpful.
Excellent.
Do you have any plans to maybe put like the history and the steps that it, you know, where we started back in January of 2023 and to where we are now and like recognizing the partners and the stakeholders? You know, I mean, we talked to all the different tribes and all the people that were a part of this. That way people, you know, might help let people understand how much intention and work went behind the scenes to get to this paragraph. Because I think it's really important to recognize all those folks. So maybe just even on the website, having somebody somewhere to recognize that would be awesome.
Thank you for the recommendation. Some of the websites we researched did something just like that to really build an understanding of where it came from and how much effort went into creating the delivered product. Yeah.
Excuse me, is anybody on the internet? Okay. Alrighty, well, thank you so much. I'm real impressed and it's an excellent body of work.
Thank you.
And the next item under innovative housing and economic development is community development monthly report. And that'll be with Daniel Murray, Tommy Crosby and Lily Oswald.
Great. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, councilors. Let me get my self situated. Thank you. I'm joined by Lily and Tommy, as mentioned, in community development. Writing our monthly update. And we'll start with our customer service strategy. I'm really excited today to share with you some progress we've made in the first two category categories primarily, which are professional efficient assistance in an accessible environment as well as clear, comprehensive and consistent communication. So what I'm here to share really hits the mark on being accessible to the public and providing more communication. This accessibility is really in an online format. So you've heard about OpenGov from a budgeting standpoint. Well, over the past year, community development has now a permitting module of OpenGov. Really modern features that we are able to utilize for our permitting function of community development. The first being it's all online, it's available to applicants any time of day. And that means that it's convenient for the public to do their work at any time and place as well as online payments is a bit of an expectation in this day and age, and now we have that availability. With this permitting software, an applicant can log in, they can see the status of their project. They receive comments back from staff. They also receive comments from external agencies, if you will, like Durango Fire or even other city departments. So the information is all coming together in one location, making it very familiar and understandable for the public as well as staff. And with all of that efficiencies comes time savings. So we're really looking forward to a more streamlined permitting process. What you see on the right side of the screen is just that landing page here. So you can come, you can do code compliance as well. If someone sees an issue, say they have concern with a fence height. And they can go to that place there, they enter their information, they can even upload photos that goes to our code compliance inspector. Land use and permitting is largely what planners are involved in. Also, building permitting is flowing through OpenGov. And then engineering has partnered with us as well for all their permitting, as well as Tommy and Economic Opportunity. So picking up that piece about building permitting, a builder can request an inspection. It goes right to our building inspector, they accept it and the communication is all seamless. Right now, it's all done with voicemails, which is rather cumbersome. And can lead to some confusion. And building this featured into OpenGov is going to really help be create predictable permitting software for us. As with most things these days, it's all heavily based on data. So we have a GIS component to this. That means we as planners have a lot of information in the background about floodplain or fire suppression standards that will really help to make sure we get the right people involved in a plan review. This also helps with the clerks department that we are keeping digital files from the onset. No more need for scanning, trying to wind that practice down. And that projects come in electronically and they're immediately integrated into on-base, which is our other archive system. And lastly, we're really looking forward to having better reporting metrics for you all. Once we track this information better, we can keep a strong sense of the permit types, the review times, the types of projects, and the list goes on. I think you've really seen, hopefully even in finances update today, the quality of what the software can offer and we're going to bring that now to our permitting system. So that's from ComDev. Thank you.
Thank you, City Council. The next item for your status update with community development is related to a couple of areas here. So we'll start out with a map just to give a little lay of the land. The two that are hashed in red are both city-owned. One to the south is called Tract C. And one just to the north is the current home of Durango's North Head Start at Tract F or 2019 East Third Avenue. As you are all probably aware, the city put out a request for qualifications earlier this year from February through about late May. And then there was an evaluation period following that. There were three bids selected. The selected bid, which was received during this window of time, involved a partnership with Tri-County Head Start Childcare, Reynolds Ashen Associates, the Agave Group and a private property owner. This request for qualifications was aimed to solicit bids for that 29, or sorry, the 1917 East Third Avenue site, which we'll see if this works, that one just to the south, that current overflow parking area. In an effort to get bids for sites with no prior commitments, which were city on commitments, meaning current leases, current structures or any impending development. The bid itself did include some language to encourage collaborative use of adjacent Mercy Plan Development lots, the ones I showed in that current or that previous slide, as well as surrounding uses, which would go to best achieve citywide and strategic plan goals. So again, that selected bid did come in and it involved both of those sites. And with what they proposed, it was a phased approach to use both of those sites, the first of which, because it's a little bit complicated. But in an effort to just be informative for you all tonight and with what will be following on your agenda at the regular meeting tonight is a lease for land with the Head Start again on that parking lot just south of there on the 1917 site. There have been some community engagement efforts ongoing online on our Connect Engage page as well as some community meetings that continue to gather feedback and we'll continue to have those with proposed and other steps along the way. We are still working out any concepts for development, the first of which is for Head Start to pursue some grant funding for their portion of what they had submitted in that proposal. That proposal
Lily, if I can, you touched on something, I just want to make sure. After the community engagement process, there was questions in regards to the RFQ only being one property, but two properties are being available. And Lily did touch on that for a second, but I just want to make sure we really put that point in there is the current tract in which is that second tract actually has a current lease by Head Start. So we didn't do an RFQ on that property because it has a current commitment to it. What we did put on there was the parking lot because that did not have a current commitment. Obviously, with a current lease, we wouldn't put that piece of property out there on an RFQ because we wouldn't have control of it. What has in that bid process was for whoever was looking at this parking lot, the one that was out to look at collaborative partnerships. Well, with that collaborative partnership, one of the the submittals was able to get a partnership with Head Start. So Head Start then began the partnership with their tract of land. So when it's, is, should it have been two? No, it was just one RFQ on a piece of property that we did not have a prior commitment to. So that's what we were looking at. And then they were able to then Head Start join in with this group to come up with a bigger proposal for us to consider.
Can I just ask while you're on it, Jose, how long that leases with Head Start? Do you know?
We do know. So the current lease, when this pre-existed on that Tract F, when it was owned by Mercy, was continued when the city took ownership of that lot. The first continuation of it, I believe, was in 2008. And then it was continued again in 2013 by the city council and then in 2017. And that current lease that we have there was the one which was considered in 2017 and approved at that point. And it auto renews with its current lease terms in two-year terms. So it's been set with that auto renewal and for what stated there, so the 2,125 per month. And that's again for the separate tract, but that is the current lease. Yep. So again, it's a separate tract and because it's city-owned property, any lease or conveyance of or sale of that property would have to go through an ordinance process. So the first step in that process is on your agenda tonight as a consent item for considering these lease terms at a future meeting. Should you approve to consider those at a future meeting. But we wanted to flag a few things which were proposed with that drafted lease from Head Start for, again, the new site. They've proposed a 30-year term. I believe this aligns with the federal grant funding that they are going after right now. There need to be at minimum 30-year terms for that and at a $10 per month rate. So it's a significant difference for your consideration. They did note that that reduced lease rate would count as local matching funds towards what they're going after, which is a $5 million federal and state grant applications currently. And it's also important to note that this lease agreement, which was going through the ordinance process now, doesn't approve any development on the site. It doesn't approve any design on the site. It doesn't approve any development or design or other uses of any other sites either. So that would include their current lease at Tract F, which has other proposals in the bid which was submitted and selected. But it has nothing to do with that site. It's just solely for this 1917 current parking lot site. And there are stipulations in that lease agreement stating this does not approve anything else other than the land lease so that they can pursue that grant funding.
Is it okay if I ask questions as we get? On that for Head Start, do we know how many youth that they are caring for in that facility?
Currently at the Tract F, so their current facility, I believe 40 to 45. And this proposed facility would double that with some opportunity for expansion, so 90.
Okay, because it would be an additional Head Start site.
It would replace in what they've proposed. So they'd be using that site to the south.
The 2017 site.
The 1917.
1917.
I know, it's, yeah, so they'd be proposing to So they'd be proposing to develop an expanded facility on this site.
Okay.
With a land lease with the city on a portion of that site for that expanded facility to serve 90 children. And then once that is completed, which could be 18, 24 months, who knows, depending on any future processes. Um, they would be demolishing that current Head Start facility as they've proposed in that bid. Um, because they'd be using that new facility. As proposed in the bid, it would be for workforce housing. But because again, that city-owned property, if that's, um, going to be ownership or lease or anything else, that would also involve a new ordinance process for that site. As well as other development procedures.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
Well, thank you for that presentation, Lily. Okay, so as I just heard, and I also attended the meeting last night. Okay, so Tract C is the 1917 first RFQ that went out in December, but.
It went out in February, but yes.
February, okay. And that is the lease that we're considering tonight for the Head Start building. Because we're going to demolish the, um, existing Head Start, move it to the parking lot, Tract C. And then we're going to try to develop that, um, other track. I can't recall the.
29, I know, it's.
For.
Yep.
For possible, uh, workforce housing.
Correct. So the bid, which was selected, involved those concepts, but all of those, you know, specific elements of those future processes are yet to come.
Okay, so right now, we're just going to utilize the parking lot to create the new Head Start so we can continue with the project, which is still in a very early, uh, design stage. And that's all we're accomplishing right now.
Yeah, so this would not approve any development on it. It's just really in an effort to let them apply for that grant funding to 100% fund this portion of their selected bid. Um, but it doesn't approve anything else, uh, to happen on that site or any other sites.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Can I make one small clarification? You are not considering the lease tonight. You are introducing it tonight to be considered in two weeks. And that's significant because the public needs notice. So you introduce it, it sits out there for two weeks for the public to understand that it's going to be considered in two weeks. So it's not being considered, it's just being introduced tonight.
Okay, so my mistake, we're just entering it into the record for consideration.
Correct. You're moving it forward in the process to be considered at the meeting in two weeks.
Well, thank you for that clarity because there was a lot of confusion about this yesterday evening.
Yeah, there will probably continue to be some confusion, so we'll keep answering those questions.
And just for clarity on the, for the public record, so they are needing the, the in-kind funds or, or like the matching funds from the, the, the city to apply for the, the $5 million grant. So that's why they need this lease potentially is because they need to show in like, hey, this is what we have. And so this is hopefully a, a mechanism for them to kind of pull for, for the grant. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
I think in part, and they'll be able to speak more specifically on their local fundraising options. Um, they're proposing a lower lease rate, significantly lower. Um, they said that that difference would go towards the local matching, which would be required by this federal, uh, grant. But they also were planning on a myriad of other local crowdsourcing and fundraising options to help meet that, I believe, 20% match. They're pretty confident that they can get there and they've been able to have some successful fundraising efforts before. Um, but this grant application and the lease going in front of you now is not specifically for that local match portion. It's just, just to be able to apply for the grant at all. They need to show that the city's engaged with a lease with them on that property to be considered.
That makes a lot of sense. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon, uh, Tommy Crosby, Economic Opportunity Manager. Brief update for you today regarding the Creative Economy Commission's sunsetting process. So the CEC had its final meeting on June 25th. Um, so what comes next? We're going to put before you in early September, a resolution to repeal a resolution that originally created the Creative Economy Commission. So look out for that in early September. Um, I want to touch on the Lodger's Tax Arts and Culture Program. This is a, uh, financial resource that the city will retain responsibility and stewardship over. We're going to create a Lodger's Tax Arts and Culture Working Group. It's going to function a lot like the CEC currently does. They will convene, um, to review and discuss applications. They will make recommendations for projects to be funded. And rather than the CEC making those final decisions for funding, that will be handed to council via consent agenda, um, to approve those final recommendations for funding. We'll still have those two application periods, one in January, one in May. Um, we'll give folks two options each year to apply. Um, and then some other roles and responsibilities, kind of common questions that we've gotten through this sunsetting process. Um, the city's public art collection and maintenance will remain an asset and responsibility of the city. Um, the Lodger's Tax Arts and Culture Funding Program, again, that will remain a responsibility and function of the city of Durango. The Durango Creates Grant Program, which is a separate arts and culture grant program from the Lodger's Tax Program, a little bit smaller, uh, about 60 to 75K per year for projects that are $5,000 or less. That will, uh, continue to be managed by the Durango Creative District with city admin support. So the Durango Creative District, they put together a group of reviewers, um, and submit recommendations for funding. Where the city comes in is that administrative support. So we're doing the, kind of the financial legwork on the backend, um, ensuring that those reimbursements that are submitted meet city standards and cutting those checks. And then the Public Art Master Plan, this has been neglected for quite a few years. Um, and we're excited for the Durango Creative District to take the lead on updating this. Um, there will be inevitable city support, um, as the city plays a large role in placing and maintaining public art around our city. Um, those are really some of the common questions that we've been getting. I'm happy to answer any questions that y'all might have, um, leading up to September, when you'll have that resolution to repeal the resolution that created the CEC.
Well, thank you, Tommy. I have one question. Okay, are you going to make recommendations how we, um, continue the maintenance on some of these items that we're taking, um, taken back?
Sorry, what, what was the last question regarding things that are taken back?
Recommendations of how we're going to go about maintaining the, you know, for the ones that, um, the city's going to start managing.
So, sorry, I should have clarified. The city currently, uh, manages and oversees repairs and maintenance on public art. I just wanted to clarify that, um, some people have been curious what's going to happen to the city's public art collection. That's going to, business as usual, we're going to keep maintaining it the way we have, keep repairing it the way we have. Nothing will change with, uh, the public art maintenance and upkeep. Did, did that answer your question?
Yes, thanks.
Who, how will we determine who is on the Lodger's Tax Committee?
Uh, great question. So I've been, uh, working with Clancy to kind of, uh, figure out how we're going to put some guidelines around that. Um, we're thinking that there, it will be one-year terms and we haven't yet determined if, um, sorry, maybe Clancy's going to kick me after this. We, we may have determined, I can't quite recall off the top of my head, if that will be, uh, application similar to commissions, the way that city council appoints commissioners? Or if that is a selection process via staff? Um, I believe, I believe if I'm remembering right, it is a selection process via staff. We're putting that one-year term on it. And then it would actually be on paper, a staff recommendation for funding as I believe work, working groups and focus groups are a tool of city staff to use to make decisions. So it would technically be a recommendation likely from myself to council. Um, and I would very much lean on, hey, this has been vetted by the LTAC Working Group, committed members who serve one-year terms. Will likely have five odd numbers to help with the tiebreaker vote.
So since it'll be on the consent agenda, likely you would, and it's a staff recommendation, then likely you would not need a staff, a council liaison on that group.
Correct. That's the path we're pursuing right now. Um, we do want to have kind of that, that final approval, that layer of additional accountability of putting it in front of council, um, to make sure that this is being done transparently. We're stewarding this fantastic city resource in the most responsible way. Um, and we find that consent agenda will, will be an appropriate way to do that. Some rounds, we get 50 applications. They can take the reviewers 15 to 20 hours to review all these. Would like to, you know, save your, uh, agenda packet, um, some, some hours of reading by having that done with the LTAC Working Group.
So Dave, you're going to have so much more time. What are you going to take on?
I think I'm going to have to find something to fill my time, but, um, I will say that it was awesome being able to be on the CC with Tommy and the way he ran meetings and the way he kind of brought everybody together. It was, uh, really, uh, a great, uh, organization, well, committee to be on.
It was.
Um, and to really provide like all the work that goes behind the scenes with the Lodger's Tax Arts, because it was such a new fund.
Yeah.
And then a, a new, um.
I'm really glad you got to see that.
Yeah.
And participate in that as a counselor and one who will be on council for a while. So that's a great, that's a great thing. I've served on it too, even before that, and I know Jessica has as well. So it's a great commission, but I, I think that the direction you're moving is a good one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tommy.
And the next section is Housing and Tourism Monthly Report with Mike French.
Good afternoon. Councilors, Mayor, it's good to see you guys in a different capacity. I'd like to provide a brief update on the ACBO project. Uh, but more importantly, the process of, uh, the administrative process of the transfer of real property. So we reviewed the, um, the process and modified it to create a couple more checks and balances. And, uh, one of the first things that I think would benefit the process is to find a partner that will do MLS listings. So as of today, we signed a, uh, contract with a listing agent to place that in on MLS. I believe it'll go onto MLS within the next 14 days. Um, that will help with community engagement and cast a wider net for potential candidates. Uh, we'll continue to use a, a third-party partner so that the city stays at arm's length of candidate identification. Um, and, uh, and once we do that, um, we'll also rely on them for the qualifications. And those qualifications will be largely focused on income eligibility. Um, but we'll also have a couple of requirements that include, uh, qualification of, uh, through Homes Fund. So they'll require a letter of support through Homes Fund. Um, we'll close the window for candidates on September 24th. That will give an opportunity for candidates to attend one of three classes that Homes Fund will provide in the local area. Um, and, uh, and that will be one of the qualifications. Uh, upon candidates' identification, um, and candidate selection, the housing staff will review those, will have an opportunity to determine any potential conflicts of interest. Um, there will be a random selection, so we're looking for more than, uh, a single candidate. Um, in a case like this where we have a very limited amount of inventory, potentially one unit, we need to, um, to try to have, uh, more than just a, a single candidate or do sole source. If we have more inventory, it can be a first come, first served, but in this case, we probably want to avoid that. Um, and then last but not least, we'll make sure to review our procurement regulations, make sure that we advertise those well. And, um, and, and, uh, I, I think that this process will scale. It'll also be a process that we can use in the future for other transfer of real property. Um, and, uh, and I look forward to, uh, a successful, um, a successful close. The timeline for this, um, is probably closing the property in November or December, but before year's end, so we get off our books. Um, in terms of the purchase price, we'll keep it at 399. Uh, the income restriction will be at 125% AMI. Um, that translates to, um, to affordability for a single person at 329, for two people, 356. And for four, uh, I'm sorry, for three, three-person household is, uh, 414. I believe that the 399 is the right place to keep it after consulting with, um, more, a few handful of mortgage lenders as well as, uh, some bankers. They're pretty confident that we can find some prospects. And that, with that, that is my update. Good to see you.
And the next update under Safety and Quality of Life will be the Public Safety Monthly Report with Chief Current and Zita.
Hello, Mayor Pro-Tim and Council. Uh, my name is Bryce Current, the Durango Police Chief. And our strategic plan goals, as was stated, is safety and quality of life. Um, we've had several community events in June, um, interactions with the Hunter Club Appreciation Event. A meeting with the Elavita, Elavita Court Neighborhood and also the Business Improvement District. And we also have National Night Out going on tonight at Buckley Park, um, at five, if we don't get rained out. Um, we also have people that come into the lobby weekly, uh, to show their appreciation, which is really cool. Um, uh, we believe primarily this is because of our relational policing and our, our one-by-one policing, um, uh, culture that we have. Um, the next slide, we have our co-response team numbers, um, and our, our, as you know, the council helped us build a team that partners with mental health professionals to build relationships with folks in the community. It's been very successful. The core team response responded to their first call back in February of 2021. The benchmarks are complex because as you can see from the slide, uh, the same month can differ from year to year. However, our average is between about 60 and 70 calls per month for the team. And, um, and the team consists of two full-time officers and two full-time clinicians as well. So one of the success stories, and there's several, uh, from this last, uh, June was, um, an individual that had received housing after one year. And there was a lot of 911 calls, um, associated to this individual the year prior to receiving housing. And once they received housing, the, the calls went down significantly. Um, however, recently the calls went up significantly again, and the core team had a relationship. And was able to get help without using any type of force or, um, anything bad happening. And they, had they not intervened, there's a good chance the individual would have lost the house within 72 hours of, of them receiving help. And we would have, um, lost a lot of progress, um, here in the city, um, with our partners. So we had a deputy chief interview process and we had five exceptional candidates. Um, one of the applicants received a different opportunity before the interview started. And after the interviews, we offered Chris Gonzalez of El Paso County Sheriff's Office a conditional offer, which he's accepted. Uh, Chris comes to us with 23 years law enforcement experience. Um, the quality of the applicants was so high that after the process, two of the other applicants have been selected for chief positions with other agencies. And so why I say that is the, the face behind those five faces is, um, is Kayla Graham. So these applicants just don't show up to Durango because it's an awesome place to live. That's part of it, but it's an intentional effort by city professionals. And the city continues hiring amazing folks focused on our mission and our strategic plan and outcomes. And, uh, and that was Kayla, and we had a successful process, I believe, because of her. So, um, our Part One offenses, which consists of violent crime and theft. Um, you could see an increase in sexual assault cases in, in June, which we take each case, we look at each case individually and investigate them thoroughly, trying to get as much footage as possible. And help from the reporting parties. And a lot of these can also be, um, the, the reports we actually get can be from previous months as well. So for the summer months, we're focusing on alcohol service as a pattern to reduce assaults over service. Um, and so the sexual assault numbers are back to one in July, which is, which is our average. In June, we saw a four-year average decrease in theft, but a slight increase from last year. So regardless, if we don't count 2020, there's, there's an increase in, in theft each year. Most thefts are from unlocked cars and shoplifting. And so we're really trying to partner with the citizens in an effort to, to lock their car doors. And, um, and it's just an effort to prevent crime from ever happening in the first place. Um, and we'll continue to educate the public. Um, we arrested the last suspect in a group of stolen cars from previous months. We average about three stolen vehicles a month and we will continue to focus on this group if they bond out. Uh, most of the cars are again unlocked or the keys are available or associates of, uh, the people with the cars. So in, as I said earlier, we were high in 2020 in part one crimes. And in 24, we are lower. However, we've seen an increase from 2022 until now. And that's primarily because of the theft and we're constantly looking for trends. So we're much higher in traffic citations and warnings. And we've made our traffic positions competitive. And that's one reason we have some really good officers that are out there just working hard. And we think that's the only trend there. But we hope to continue to find solutions and work with the city engineering and research technology to reduce speed and decrease the number of traffic citations that we're given. Um, and, um, and, and incentivize deterrence as well. Zita, Phil.
I have a couple of questions for you.
Oh, sorry.
Um, for the, yeah, sorry. For the deputy chief, or do we have any internal candidates? We didn't, didn't look like we did.
We didn't have any internal candidates put in and it's been a lot of discussion in reference. That's, that's our goal.
Right.
Is to be able to promote from within.
I mean, you're a great example.
Yeah. And it takes time and you know, Chief Brammer was instrumental in pushing our, our professional development. And we're still working on that, um, which requires.
Good.
You know, uh, different degrees, uh, master's degree in different schools, command level schools. And, um, so we are absolutely working on that.
Excellent. And then, um, I had another question I've been seeing on Nextdoor, I think they call it, that app, um, from residents here locally about an increase in porch thefts for packages being left at the front door. Are you hearing from residents about any of that? Cause I've seen several posts about it.
No, but I'm going to go back and check on that first thing now.
Yeah.
I haven't heard about it.
It's.
We, we hear about it periodically, but I haven't heard of an increase in it. We're always looking out for.
Yeah.
You know, for that. And it does happen, but I haven't heard about a specific.
It does happen. Okay. Cause I was, um, surprised to hear it. The, you know, it seemed, I, I saw a couple of posts on it. So I was wondering if, you know, it's definitely coming to our neighborhoods. Um, so I think people need to be aware. And, um, I sure hope that residents are reporting it when it happens.
Yeah. And that's another educational, even for this meeting here, if people are listening, another educational effort that we'll continue to push forward with the vehicles being locked and those other things.
Yeah.
It's cyclical and we do need to ramp that up and I'll go back and check on that as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Pro Tem and Council. Thank you for, uh, having me here to speak with you today and give you a little bit of an update. Uh, we have, uh, our statistics, which are remaining very consistent with calls for service and they kind of balance out with, uh, between the law and we've had an increase there with the fire. Our, our answer times are well above the national standard requirement of entering the percent answered in 20 seconds or less. We have a goal of 95% and we're consistently meeting that at about 98%. Same with, uh, answering in 15 or less. We're, we're getting those at, uh, almost 97% and, and the goal is 90%. So we do well there. Um, our citizen surveys still being successful. We still, every time we conduct it, we get comments from citizens saying that they appreciate us reaching out and contacting them. And we do forward any comments to our client agencies if that it pertains to something that they worked on. Uh, we're right at 38 to 40% return rate on that, which is, is good for a survey. And, uh, we've gotten in this second quarter, 80 separate individual feedback remarks from citizens. So we closed the loop on those, follow up on them and make sure that, uh, they got the level of service that they expected, or if we need to make adjustments, we can. Uh, listed just the more significant calls that we handle, uh, that, that, you know, affect our, our dispatcher's wellbeing, the CPR calls and the trauma calls. And you can see there that we, you know, we handle those consistently each, each month. Um, I would like to mention that last year we had our first open house. We're going to be having that again this month on August, the 22nd from four to six 30. If y'all are interested in, uh, coming by and seeing the center and everybody that works there. And I guess our most significant accomplishment this last week was we went to North Carolina for a hearing before the Commission for Law Enforcement Accreditation. Um, and were awarded our first, uh, accredited status. So we're pretty excited about that. We're one of seven in Colorado, one of 137 in the nation. And you know, it just lays the foundation for building toward a successful future. It's continuous improvement in constantly evaluating your processes. It's using metrics and data that you can speak to and say, this is how we do business and make informed decisions for that. So we're pretty excited about that and, um, maybe a little more to come about it later on, but, uh, that's my report for the day.
Well, congratulations on being awarded.
Yes.
That's wonderful.
It was a team effort and it took a lot of work, but.
That's great.
So we're excited.
That's good news.
That's excellent news. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions?
That's good.
All right. Thank you.
And the next presentation is the Parks and Recreation Monthly Report with Kelly Schmidt and Ellen Babers.
Good afternoon, Mayor Pro Tem, Council, Kelly Schmidt, Parks and Recreation Director. I just wanted to share with you that as a department, we wanted to move in a different direction during these monthly opportunities with you. Um, we'll be doing quarterly updates on our operations, but I reached out to the team and gave everyone an opportunity to present to you during, uh, study session. Um, every other time. And Ellen was the first person to raise her hand and she wanted to share with you today about the Fourth of July event. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ellen.
Hello, and thank you for letting me be here today. Um, I think what I want to say first is we are part of safety and quality of life. And so we have the same mission, the same vision, the same goals as everyone else. What we see community events as is a community connector. And today specifically, I'm going to talk about Fourth of July and the philosophy we have for it and what we are, have done with it and where we are going with it as well. The, um, philosophy we have is that Fourth of July is a chance to create opportunities for locals and for visitors, but mostly for locals first to reflect and, um, think about what we have in common and, and where we are together instead of what we have different. Um, we do this by creating interactive opportunities for people of all ages. So sometimes it might be a concert. Sometimes it might be something that, um, people are parading down the street together, or they are playing a game together, or they're seeing something, but it's a chance to do something with another one. We hold space during the, um, four days to honor the people, the founding of our community, founding of our country, and also the people who have served. And then we basically instigate fun and we invite people to play together. So that's the philosophy. The vision, borrowing a little bit from some of our founders is Fourth of July by the people, for the people. And that's really about the locals. Um, our vision is that instead of people saying, oh no, I'm going camping. Oh no, I'm going to Silverton. Oh no, that's the chance I'm going somewhere else. Is that they say, I'm staying here because my family and my friends want to come here for, for Fourth of July. So that's what we've been working for specifically the last three years. And it's really fun that it's kind of now all coming together. I'm going to give you, um, a little bit of a brief history. There's a lot of community partners on this slide and I'll let you read and see that. There's a lot of media coverage, but just the overall history of Fourth of July is that from the early 2000s on, the responsibility for Fourth of July has been the cities, bids, different community organizations. Everybody moving in and out with, with, um, taking it for a couple of years and then handing it off. Bid had it, the Business Improvement District had it for a long time up until 2016. In 2017, it came to Parks and Rep. It didn't mean that we own every single event, but the responsibility for putting it on was back with the city. In 2018, Alex Wilkinson, who was my predecessor, spent a lot of time trying to take those events that were standard, making sure they still happened, but that the city was not bearing all the cost nor all of the, um, energy to put them on. So our community partners were set and that schedule that you maybe have experienced, I'm hoping if you've stayed around for Fourth of July, and if not, I invite you for next year, that that hasn't really changed in probably 10 or 12 years. We, you know, we start at Rotary Park, we end it to the street dance. Um, but what is different is that in the last three years, we've worked with, I have worked with Business Improvement District, the Chamber, the Visit Durango, and many of the other people that you see up here to make it a four-day event, to make it not just, well, I was going to stay, but there's not really reason to stay the next day. So I'm going to go camping, but to make it a reason that people come and stay the four, the, the whole time. This year, that three years of work has really paid off. We had 30 events, um, over the four days. And about 50 businesses or organizations that had some input, either they were a location or they helped put something on. And that's a big deal because part of that getting people to stay is that when they stay, there's workers who now stay for the businesses. So the businesses have more capacity during this period that's busy as well. So that there's a business case behind this besides just a community, um, enjoyment and celebration. The advertising starts and the awareness starts in January and May we, and that's with when we're starting to approach the businesses and, and putting out the dates. And maybe we start getting the websites up. We will be working to get that up much sooner than May. So even as early as the end of this year, putting out what's going to happen for next year. We advertise to the public and, um, radio advertisement starts in June and then the newspaper starts the week up. So I don't have a level of the economic impact. I think more in September we will, we have the numbers, um, gathered from last year, but when Visit Durango can give us their, what we call it the phone report. I know that's not the actual name of it, but it's how they geolocate, how many people are in town or stayed in town. Um, that is probably going to be available in September as will the tax numbers where we can look year over year. Are we making a difference economically? Um, anecdotally, for what it's worth, um, we had lots, we had a great increase in the numbers. Um, the, I'll just use the 5K as an example. We had 225 people last year and we had 340 people this year. We'll have a little more water, a little more cups, a little more porta potties than we did because we weren't expecting that much of increase. But what was fun was at least 10 different locals that I know tangentially came up and said, you know, I've never done this before. But this year we kept hearing enough of the advertisement and we decided to stay in town and do it. I think there is another. I'm not going to play all of this. I just want to make you aware of it.
Looking for something fun to do to celebrate the Fourth of July? Whether you're looking for good food, community events, or live music, Durango has multiple activities for everyone. You're watching the local news roundup brought to you by the payroll department and Freddie's frozen custard and steak burgers. I'm Sadie Smith. The City of Durango Business Improvement District, Durango Chamber of Commerce, Visit Durango, and the La Plata County Fairgrounds and Event Center have collaborated to bring 30 different events spanning July 3rd through July 6th. Take off the fun with a scavenger hunt of downtown businesses. Find the hidden.
I'm not going to go through the whole thing. You can watch it at a different time. This is free publicity and part of that is, um, it's the local nature of what we're doing. So John Segalito, who owns Fast Signs with Laurie Segalito, also puts on the, um, Building Homes for Heroes. That's part of the local news network. And so their contribution back to the community was advertising all of the other events as well. And those partnerships are what we really work on. It's having people who might not always do something with a different group, like having Oscar's pies at the Durango Beer and Ice that we make connections that haven't been there before. If we are lucky, we won't just keep going through.
PM to be entered and.
There we go. I'll go through the days briefly. Um, part of why the, the rodeo is up there is that this is also a great opportunity to bridge the urban rural difference and to invite people from La Plata County into Durango. And True Western where rodeos really stepped up this year. They brought three different rodeos in and it was great fun. I was moving equipment trailers in and out of the county lot as all this was going on. But to watch all the, um, all the different people dressed to the nines for their date to the rodeo and see them enjoying it, staying to dance afterwards and literally the kids just playing in, in the dirt, just being in a hometown. Another thing that happened this night, which shows the, the connectivity is the VFW hall is obviously located right next to the Rotary Park. The Southwest Civic Winds gives a free concert. They started that last year and they've partnered with the VFW. VFW does an ice cream social and does it as a fundraiser. So two organizations that wouldn't necessarily do something together, but in this, um, in this way can come together. Thursday, as I said before, is the same kind of, um, schedule that we've had before with of course, the addition of fireworks this year. And I'll talk about that in just a moment. Um, what, what we did going into it was look at the fact that we might not have fireworks. We certainly haven't had them for a long time. We tried drones for a couple of years. It was a very iffy, um, possibility. And so we looked at bringing in a bigger band and we brought in the Motet. That's the picture on the, on the right, um, which is a big band out of Denver. And that's a model that we will continue to have. We'll have to balance it with how much it costs. We'll probably go with a little bit smaller cost band next year. Hoping that we can have fireworks again. But the idea that if the fireworks don't go, there's still a reason to be in town. There's something that you would be a part of that you couldn't be otherwise, or would have to pay quite a bit somewhere else because it is a free concert. The fireworks, um, the fireworks was a great contribution by Durango Fire Department. And I just can't, um, emphasize that enough because if they had not been flexible and met with me and really looked at a different place to launch the fireworks, we would not have had them this year. And it looks like, and we'll know from year to year with what the fire danger is, that the fire park is such a more, um, it, it's a location that they can respond to. So they had 20 firefighters there. They had pump trucks. They could, um, wet down the field in front in case we needed to and wet down it again afterwards. They didn't need to because we had had so much rain. We did have one firework, if you watched closely, that didn't get all the way off the ground and exploded. And they had about five spot fires immediately put out by them. So it is through that, um, that community, uh, intent to what can we do instead of we can't do that? We can't do from the cemetery, but what can we do? That it was able to happen with a good chance that it will happen in even years that we wouldn't have been able to otherwise. So we'll see as that goes, but that's the hope. Um, I have to say that a friend of mine, so my friend of mine took a picture of the fireworks and she sent it to me that night and I was watching the fireworks and I thought she had gotten it off the web. So I was so excited. And then Tom, of course, took these pictures, um, from the top of. The, the really fun part that I didn't know until later, because I couldn't hear where I was at the Transit Center was as soon as this finished, all of the horns at the train station started honking. So it was just a spontaneous, spontaneous, uh, reaction, but a real, real fun part for everybody that got to hear it. Okay. Here we go. So Friday and Saturday both bring eating contest. Um, and I guess anecdotally again, the contests that we have are all of the events vary in size from about 40 people to 1,500 plus at the Transit Center, more downtown, but just as a, as a guest. So 30 different events, some of the same people, sometimes different people. Um, what we know is that the attendance was increasing and also that the, um, people had wait lists. So last year on some of these eating contests, we didn't have enough, we didn't have as many spots as we had chairs for, and they had waiting lists this year. So a popular and very fun. I don't think I would want to do it personally, but very fun to. a popular and very fun, I don't think I would want to do it personally, but very fun to watch that happens. Sa- Saturday was more of the same. What we do here, if you look at these, a lot of these aren't new events, but it is packaging events that are already happening. So farmer's market already always happens. Friday first night always happens. And so by joint marketing, we can get more, more out of it. And that's a difference as well. So a couple of years ago, I was asking organizations, would they be part of it? I mentioned the 50 that we have. We also had two new planning partners that said, hey, we want to step up. Local First did as well as the Young Professionals of Durango. The last thing I want to say is save the date. It will continue to be four days. Next year it is Thursday through Sunday because Fourth of July is on Friday. And what are, where are we going with it? What are we doing? We have two sponsors that step up every year. Very nice sponsors because they call me and say, I want to sponsor. I don't even have to go ask them. And that's Four Corners Broadcasting and Waste Management of Durango. What Kelly Schmidt and I have talked about is that we think there's more opportunity for sponsorship to lower the cost to the city and to give more preview to other people. But what we did change this year, and this is a small version of it, but we don't have the sponsors listed. We looked at, I looked at Fourth of July all across and, and this, the, the feedback we got, for those of you who can't see, there are no sponsors listed, but it says City of Durango. And I asked all the partners, are you okay with that? And they say that clean look says, this is Durango. And we'll, we'll honor the sponsors, but not in that front facing promotion. So that's where we're going. Look for improved parades. Chip Wild, who does Snow Down, several of the other parade folks and I have been working on getting the quality and variety of the entries to improve. And I think we'll continue doing that. We'll also probably have an under eight parade that'll go just down the eighth block. So for those little kiddies, you have to be at least one day old and less than eight that'll be able to be in a parade. And that is where we're going. I'd be glad to answer any questions about where we've been or, or what's happening next.
Yeah, just watching the fireworks downtown, I heard from many people that they were just super excited to, to see fireworks back in Durango. So great work and, and also realizing the partnerships needed to, to make that happen. So thanks for doing all the legwork and you know, we get to, you know, ride the coattails of all the successes, but it's, it's you all behind the scenes that really make it happen. So thank you.
It's really fun to be able to work across the city and with all these different organizations and it's fun for them too. So it's really a wonderful celebration. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
And under reliable infrastructure and community connectivity, we have a video from the Transportation Department for their monthly report.
Good afternoon, City Council. I am Sarah Hill, Transportation Director. Myself and a number of transportation staff are currently at the Association for Commuter Transportation's International Conference in Exotic, Denver, Colorado. So we're unable to be at the meeting this afternoon. But we did want to provide an update on how our department is supporting the strategic plan goal of reliable infrastructure and community connectivity.
Through the end of June, Durango Transit provided a total of 216,274 rides, which is an 8% increase over ridership in the first six months of 2023. This graph shows the January through June ridership for the last three years, showing that we have fully recovered from the COVID-19 ridership impacts and are consistently offering more rides than the previous years. This chart also shows the impact that free transit has on ridership numbers with sharp spikes in June. Here's what some of our riders have to say about the Free Fair Transit Program, which council has funded through their discretionary use of the lodgers tax.
It's cool to have a free transit during the summer. I just hold on to passes, take advantage of the free.
They house me a lot when I, when I go to work and stuff.
Ah, yeah, I got here on June 4th. And then I found out it was free all summer. I was like, woo-hoo. That was pretty cool.
Good afternoon, Devin King, Multimodal Manager for the city. There's been a lot of recent activity on Downtown's Next Step. The Multimodal Division worked with the city's Community Engagement Specialists in July to create a focus group to provide feedback on proposed changes to the preliminary design. The focus group met on July 25th and August 1st to provide feedback. Their feedback will help the design team as they update the preliminary design based off all the various feedback and engineering elements. City project staff will be participating in a forum on August 27th with the Business Improvement District, Local First, and The Chamber to answer business questions regarding Downtown's Next Step. Additionally, the pilot project has started to be implemented with the two new pellets installed on the 1,000 block in front of Maria's and the 600 block in front of Fuzzy Wigs. The curb extensions are being contracted for installation later this month. Lastly, city staff are excited to announce that the city was awarded a Dole Main Street Live grant that will fund the remaining design of Downtown's Next Step. The city kicked off West Park Avenue Traffic Calming Design on July 30th at Fast Binder Park with an open house to hear the neighborhood's vision and needs for West Park Avenue. This input will be used to create a conceptual design for West Park Avenue that will then go back to the community for feedback this fall. This project is focused on safety and connectivity for cyclists and pedestrians on West Park Avenue. The city held a meeting for the Midtown Safety and Connectivity Improvement Project on July 10th. The design team presented 60% design plans and alternatives for the 4E to 15th third intersection. There were close to 40 in attendance at the meeting. City staff took a poll from attendees of their preference on the three alternatives presented for the 4E to 15th third intersection. The poll was also posted to the webpage after the meeting for further feedback and has received close to 500 responses. The feedback results and recommendation from staff for the intersection will be presented to City Council on September 4th. Hi.
And the next presentation is the Public Works Department Monthly Report with Laura Rick.
I don't have a video or fireworks, but I have pictures of sewers. So I'm Laura Rick, Public Works Outreach and Education Coordinator. And I've got the monthly report for June for Public Works. Public Works aligns with the strategic plan goal of reliable infrastructure and community connectivity. So in water treatment, the city's water demand in June was slightly higher than last year, while our raw water irrigation decreased just a bit. We pumped 38.8 million gallons from the Animus River in June, which was 20% more than this time last year. And because we had a mild winter, irrigation systems came online a month earlier this year. The selected engineering firm performed a site visit to begin the water plant expansion feasibility study. And the Florida Outfall Project Submittals were approved by staff. The CDP, she's a typo on there. We took our Treatment Train One offline to clean the sedimentation basins because it doesn't have a self-cleaning system like our other treatment train. It has us on fire hoses. In wastewater treatment, we treated 5% less wastewater than in June of last year. Again, likely due to less rain events and less inflow and infiltration coming into our collection system. The cogeneration system at the plant, which uses waste methane gas to help power the wastewater plant, produced just over 29,000 kilowatt hours of electricity and that reduced the plant's electric bill by $2,000. The staff repaired gearbox and one of the wastewater influence screens in the headworks. That's the picture with the pink, the new pink liner. The screens remove large debris from the wastewater before it enters the plant and helps protect our downstream equipment. That large debris gets into the collection system from people flushing large things down the toilet or dropping them down manholes, which really happens. And severely damages the infrastructure and equipment and can lead to sewer backups and overflows. We also hosted a wastewater operator training in June, which was the second of five trainings that we've hosted this summer for regional operators and we had a great turnout. The distribution crews continued assisting capital improvements with the North College Drive project. They repaired three brakes, working in shift to ensure the services were restored as quickly as possible. They repaired a hydrant, completed cross connection control inspections on new builds around town. They exercised valves and they replaced 32 water meters. Some were part of the meter replacement program and others because they were leaking. The sewer collections crews continued maintenance on the sections of sewer mains that were identified as problem areas from the Sewer Line Rapid Assessment Tool Survey. And they had several emergencies that they had to respond to with blockages in the mains and in the lift stations. They continuously checked on the operations of the newly replaced Ramada, Upper Ramada Lift Station, and they were happy to report that it's running smoothly and very well. The Lightner Creek Lift Station is next to be replaced, but not till next year. And with that picture, you can see they found a huge root system in the seven-foot tall tree inside one of the manholes in town. There's a before and after picture of them cleaning it and that's what they got out of it. And it took five people to get that up and out. And it filled up the entire back of a flatbed pickup truck. Yeah. Yes. All right. So painting continued in June in the Streets Division with over 900 miles of, of roads swept and parking stalls, streets, crosswalks, and curb lines painted all month. The crews went through almost 400 gallons of paint just in June. 75 signs were repaired or replaced in June, 25 potholes repaired, and nearly half a mile of ditches were cleaned out. They also repaired broken curbs around the city and repaired a sinkhole on Jameson Drive. The Trash and Recycling Division took in 67 truckloads of compacted trash to the landfill. And that was about 20% less than last June. 258 tons of single stream recyclable material was diverted from the landfill, which is 40% more than last June. And this is due to bailing the material that was set aside when the baler was down in February. We had four new commercial trash recycle accounts and took in almost $13,500 from over 1,800 public drop-offs. And slightly more than last June. They, the crews up there completed over 100 different work orders for repairs and maintenance on their equipment. And they attended the 2024 Waste Expo where they got to try out a fully operational EV trash truck and demoed some new software programs that we'd like to implement next year. The technology in these programs help us track, log, record, and monitor the truck routes and is really helpful in measuring our key performance indicators. The Capital Improvement Construction Management Division was obviously very busy in June. And the Santa Rita Water Reclamation Facility Primary Sledge Pump Replacement went out to bid. And this will replace the existing sledge pumps that they have with much more efficient ones. The CICM team assisted Parks and Rec with construction inspections during the start of the Smith Sports Complex Parking Lot Project. Work continued on Chapman Hill, 250, 251, North College, and Lake Night Horse Entrance Projects. And the pickleball courts were finished and opened in June with the grand opening that happened in July. And Phase One of the 32nd Street Stormwater Detention Basin was completed and Phase Two is currently in design. In June, engineering approved civil plans for a new Starbucks just east of the Maverick Gas Station in Three Springs. Durango Mesa Area Plan and Design Guidelines were approved by council in June. They approved the Twin Buttes filing four. So development is moving east, adding 28 residential units and three new neighborhood roads in Twin Buttes. And work has already begun on installing the water and sewer infrastructure. The DFPD Station Two issued a building permit and were, they were issued a building permit and they started vertical construction in June. And the permanent three-way stop was installed at Florida Road and Holly Avenue to help increase traffic flow and traveler safety in that area during the construction projects over there. As you heard in the Community Development Update, engineering and comm dev have implemented OpenGov for permit processing and this is really helping to enable the public to view, submit, and make payments online for permits. And it gives much more visibility to the public so they can see where their project is in the permitting process. Rosemary Lane permits were issued for the first three houses, which is great because the project has been idle for some time. So it's good to see it moving again. And the North Sirius Texas Barbecue Location is expanding their parking lot and they're installing some stormwater friendly permeable pavers on the lot. Permeable pavers allows the stormwater to permeate into the soils rather than flowing off of the pavement down into the street, down into the river ultimately. So they're best practice design method and they're going to be used in future alleyway designs to advance the city's commitment to sustainability and to reduce pollutants that enter our waterways. That's all I have. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
No questions, but I would say that you did have the dilapidated attachments last time. So that was really good for us to see. And the photo was great. So, thank you.
That seven-foot tall tree out of the sewer would be appropriate.
That would have been, but a picture speaks a thousand words. So thank you.
Yes. Okay. Thank you very much.
And next is the Aviation Department Monthly Report with Brad Riddle.
Good afternoon. I'm Brad Riddle. I'm the Airport's Operations and Project Manager. Here to give you just a quick update on the airport's activity. This is a overview of our, some of the metrics we use to highlight airport activity, including planements, seat capacity, load factor. You can see all of these metrics are significantly up from our 23. And these are year-to-date through June, comparing 2023 numbers to 2024. This is pretty much the same information, just in a nice visual for you. Our current route network for August is five times daily to Denver, four to five daily to Dallas, Fort Worth, and three times daily to Phoenix. We are seeing seasonal Houston service from United Airlines that is once a day on Saturdays and Sundays. That'll be coming to an end here mid-August. And this fall, United Airlines will be expanding to six daily flights up from their current five. So that's to help with our seasonal ski service, winter service. Current projects that we want to talk about. Our first phase of terminal expansion, Phase 1A, has been completed and our new family restrooms and nursing mothers rooms were opened last month. We also completed the first phase of our parking lot expansion. So that was a paving of our upper overflow parking lot and that consisted of 275 new paved parking revenue spaces for our traveling public. And we are underway for design of the next phase of scheduled design. So that'll consist of design throughout the winter and we will be doing construction of that in 2025. Here's some photos of the new family restrooms and nursing room. Our new parking lot. And this is the county weather radar that the airport is, is hosting. This is a county-led product, project, but the airport is the sponsor site for that. That's all I have. Thanks.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Mayor Protem and Council. My name is Clancy Nixon. I'm the Community Engagement Specialist for the City of Durango. Here to present on our Engage and Inform Community goal area, followed by Tom, who's going to update you on our public information and how we're doing the outreach. So July, our community meetings included a Midtown Safety and Connectivity Meeting on July 10th. We also had an Elavita Neighborhood Meeting July 17th. The Midtown Meeting itself had 38 attendees with 10 of those being new. The Elavita Neighborhood Meeting had 12 attendees with about three folks who were new. The Engaged Durango Forum on July 23rd, that was focused on sustainability efforts for the city and Marty Poole was wonderful enough to come present on that and did a great job. And he brought some folks into the room as well with 30 individuals who attended. And he brought some folks into the room as well with thirty individuals who attended with eighteen folks being new to that forum. Downtown's Next Step Focus Group, as was mentioned earlier in this meeting tonight or this afternoon, uh, we met twice on this twenty-fifth and on the first of August. For about three hours total. Um, we got some great feedback from folks. We had nine folks in the room with us. And really dove into how they felt. Um, but I'm sure you'll get a comprehensive report on that um, out of the whole downtown's next step engagement report that's coming at you, I think, pretty soon. We also had a West Park Avenue Neighborhood Open House, which was mentioned by Devon. That was on July thirtieth. Um, he reported about uh, twenty-five folks who showed up with fifteen of those folks being new. Um, in his, in his report to me. That was a total of about a hundred and fourteen folks that we engaged with just with public meetings. Um, with fifty-five of them being new. So that puts us at about forty-eight percent for those public meetings on new folks who are walking in the door that we're engaging with, which. I think is a great number for uh, most recent months. We also had our first pilot program uh, or our first uh, neighborhood walk and roll. It was a pilot with Mayor Jessica Buehl. That happened on July thirty-first. She um, had kind of a, a more moving form of open office hours. And that was, that took place out at Oxbow Park. She met folks out there and just walked along the River Trail. The report I got from her was that she loved it and that it was definitely worth her time. That was our first one and five folks showed up. Um, I think there was a parking issue there, so prevented at least one person from, from joining. So. Good consideration for next time. I was thinking that it would be a neighborhood thing without a whole lot of driving, but. Uh, we have had two requests since then, since posting it to our Engaged Durango website. Um, for neighborhood walks in two different neighborhoods. So don't be surprised if you hear from me about um, potentially joining unknown one of those. Our Engaged Durango website had a, a good month for the month of June. Um. You can see there's some uh, highlighted spikes in that graph there. So downtown's next step, that was the survey. We did another um. Another push for that survey at the beginning of June and originally went out in May, if you remember. We also had a midtown, a bump with the midtown poll that we put out for that project for the midtown safety and connectivity. And then we also had the neighborhood parking permit program poll as well, and that brought in our highest numbers uh, to date as far as that spike goes. So uh, for the month of June, we had um, nearly nineteen hundred views on the page. Uh, fourteen hundred visits. You can see all those numbers and fifty-two new followers for just the month of June. Um, we currently have registrations of two hundred and forty-five. I think it's gone up even since um, I put this together. I think we're over two hundred and fifty at this point. Uh, folks who actually have like. Put in their information to the website rather than just coming, visiting, dropping by and leaving. Um, twenty-six projects are currently on the website and some highlighted projects. You know, I think it's pretty fair to say those spikes right there are the highlighted projects for what's really drawing people into the Engaged Durango website right now. And again, it's at engage.durangoco.gov. And I will say with our public meetings, I continue to do quick straw polls, a raise of hands um, for folks who have heard of Engaged Durango. Um, and. Most of the folks in the room who arrive in person have not been to that website yet. And I think that that's. A key piece to consider. It's a totally different um. Group of folks who are showing up in person versus who's engaging with us online. Just wanted to highlight that as well again. In August, we have a few upcoming engagement, a couple of engagement opportunities. Uh, on the fifteenth, we have a meeting from five to six thirty at the library. For the East Third Avenue Childcare and Affordable Housing Project. It's a neighborhood meeting, kind of asking for a lot more feedback. We did do. We answered to the neighborhood and hosted one last night. Um, thank you, Councilor Yazzy for showing up. Um, and uh, really that one was focused on the process. This one, we're kind of diving into the design features, the conceptual design features of those tracks. Um, downtown's next step forum, this one is not hosted by us. This one's hosted by the Business Improvement District Locals First and the Chamber of Commerce. That's happening on August twenty-seventh, eight o'clock to ten AM. This is going to be a staff panel, a city staff panel. We received questions from um, these three organizations that they've compiled. That they're going to be asking um, our city staff members um, just to kind of clear the air. Um, try to prevent misinformation that's out there about this project. So folks can hear it directly from us. So if you have a, a moment to attend that one, that's for business owners. Um, and then they're going to do a recording uh, for anybody else. We also recently decided that we are going to do our next Engaged Durango Forum. Uh, will be focused on the downtown's next step project as well. So that's happening on September twenty-fourth. And as promised, um, I thought I would give you an update on the Community and Cultural Relations Commission. Um. For this group, we did receive a summary of our external feedback uh, that we received from our partner regarding our strategic planning. Um, I was waiting on that before really diving into some things and presenting uh, recommendation for. Updating the CRC, the Community Relations Commission. You can see I renamed it. Um. And I think that. Out of that report, we scored a six point five six out of ten across all the stakeholder groups that we interacted with. In their level of satisfaction with cultural diversity and inclusivity from the city. Obviously some room for improvement there, and I think that this may be a great answer to that um, by revamping this, this commission. So I, I'm, I planned to present an amendment to the current CRC resolution um, on August twentieth at that meeting. But I wanted to give you an update as far as the purpose. So the purpose that I've currently drafted for that is the Community and Cultural Relations Commission. Is an advisory board that assists with supporting an environment in which our diverse community members feel valued. And heard when they interact with the City of Durango as an organization. The CRC, C C R C will help create a welcoming setting for historically disadvantaged groups. That encourages participation and builds trust and collaboration. The C R C C, the C C R C works to build new relationships with community leaders and organizations. Celebrate Durango's diverse cultural communities and cultivate meaningful and authentic engagement. The charge is to build City of Durango relationships and partnerships with underrepresented groups in the community. Serve as community liaisons between underrepresented groups in the City of Durango. Help the City of Durango to increase awareness and understanding the needs of our community members through positive cooperative partnerships and two-way communication. Develop and plan an annual cultural heritage or resource sharing event for the City of Durango. And review, recommend and promote programs that recognize cultural diversity in the community. As far as our members of this commission, we are asking for up to seven members. Uh, I dropped that from nine in our last study session uh, as far as my recommendation. Seven seems to fit kind of the groups that we're targeting within our community. So those groups are Black or African Americans. Latina or Hispanic individuals, Native Americans and Indigenous people, Asian Americans. Members of the LGBTQ plus community. Youth members between the ages of eighteen and twenty-five and individuals with a disability. Um, so that's coming at you on the twentieth with the full proposal. Any questions? That's the end.
Thank you, Clancy. Okay, I was wondering, okay, so on your bullet point, the City of Durango scored a six point five six. How did you score that? Was that a questionnaire or was it like a one, two, ten, you know, choose?
Yeah, so this was a part of the comprehensive report that we, we received from our partnership with Stratech. Um, so I was not actually in the room asking these questions. Um, this was, and that was very um, much on purpose. It was, we were kind of removing the city so folks could give us their feedback without city staff being present. Um, that way it was as unbiased as we could get it. Um, as far as specifically what question that, that was the question of like. What rate your satisfaction between one and ten with the cultural diversity and inclusivity was my understanding from that summary of the report.
Good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
So what I was whispering to Clancy was to let you know, we're going to be back into fireworks right now. But anyways. Good afternoon, Mayor Protem and Councilors, Tom Sluse with the July update for the Public Information Office. Um, so my team again is focused on the website and on video production and social media. So some quick highlights of the website year to date, we are at one point seven million views, which is up one, sorry, one point seven million page views, which is up sixty-two percent. Over last year, uh, number of users is pushing half a million. That's up forty-five percent. And the event per user, which is just a click of a button, uh, could be playing a video, filling out a form. That's also up twelve percent at three point one. So those are all good numbers. Uh, our top webpage views similar to last month uh, was the jobs page. Uh, but again, when you compile all of the interest in the airport, the airport is our really our number two driver. Uh, for the news releases on the website, we had thirty-one for July. Uh, which were viewed almost thirteen thousand times, up to fifty-seven percent over last year. And a year to date, we've had a hundred and forty-six uh, news releases sent out. And this again is a cross-departmental effort. It's not just PIO, but we get a lot from various departments. They've been viewed over fifty-five thousand times. Uh, that's up eighteen percent over last year. And some quick highlights on the right-hand side of some recent news releases. Uh, again, we had one on the open gov portal for uh, planning. We've had. Re, road resurfacing projects around town, traffic calming at West Park, uh, Florita Road Construction got a lot of attention. And as did the Engaged Durango. Uh, the top five news releases were of course fireworks. Uh, Lake Night Horse New Entrance and the um, I think they had something at the ramp going on there too, got a lot of interest. Uh, repaving at the airport, of course. The July fourth uh, schedule of events and the workforce housing unit that was reconsidered. For uh, C Click Fix, which is our online reporting tool, it's pretty consistent with last year, although we did notice that the uh, number of reports for unsanctioned camping has actually decreased. Um, since last year by about forty. Uh, yeah, so we're still digging into that. But otherwise, it's fairly consistent in terms of the reports that we're getting. Uh, we are looking into other category. Uh, because that is up a little bit. Um, it's not simply for camping. We know that much, but we're going to try and uh, figure out how to kind of send those to the right departments. For social media, uh, numbers again are just uh. Up across the board for posts, impressions or audience of, you know, the comments in particular, I wanted to highlight, uh, we're about uh, for July, about seventeen hundred comments. People are much more engaged online than they were last year, up a hundred and sixty-eight percent. Uh, engagements is sixty-one thousand. Again, this is just if you're clicking on something, if you're liking a comm, you know, if you're putting a comment in, you're uh, putting in if you like something or, or sending it to somebody. Uh, so total social media viewers right now, seventy-one thousand, six hundred and eighteen. That is up almost a thousand um, compared to last month. And most of the growth was in the city's main accounts. Uh, those two bars in the bottom are Facebook and Instagram in particular. Where we had three hundred and fourteen new followers. That is now our number five account. Uh, police typically has a similar kind of growth, but I think they've got a position open right now in social media, but they will probably be having some higher numbers moving forward. So social media is doing great. Uh, the engagement on Facebook, I put our top five. Uh, posts there that are based on again, the reactions that we get, the comments, the shares, the, the uh, the clicks as people are going through our feed. And our number one for July was the uh, Malfunction Junction uh, post. Uh, of course fireworks was up there, number two. Buckley Park, number three. Our traffic alert for Florita Road was uh, number four. And then um, we're getting a lot of great traction on all of the murals around town that we're posting on. And this one in particular on um. Garden Shorts got a lot of attention. So top five engagement for Instagram, uh, again, similar rationale for link, uh, likes and clicks and links uh, when you're going through this are of course the fireworks. And then their next three were all uh, murals downtown. The last one was the uh, the, the man who was arrested under suspicion of uh, luring those kids in. Um, that was our number five, which was kind of unusual for Instagram. Uh, top videos, these are just the top three for uh, Facebook and Instagram. I'll go through real quick. Again, you've seen this, but it was just the uh, the fireworks video. Was our number one. Uh, another.
Hi, I'm Hannah Wilson and I'm a local artist here in Durango. Uh, I have gotten funding from the lodgers tag.
So she was great. And then uh, pickleball was our number three. And I did want to thank my staff for dressing up in the pickleball costumes that day. That was uh, above and beyond. So I appreciated that. Yeah. Uh, for Instagram top videos, again fireworks, I won't play it. Uh, the same video from uh, Facebook with Hannah and her mural in the eleven hundred block. Uh, the last one though, our number three video at five thousand views was actually just a kind of a trending meme. I don't know if you've seen it, but if not, here it is.
Hey, hey, you can't park there. You can't park there.
Can't park there.
You can't park there.
You can't park there.
So that was it. A lot of people parking weird places. We figured let's have some fun with it. Um, that's all I got.
Yeah. On social media viewers, is, was that in a month?
That's a running uh, total. So that's going to change.
For the year?
Yeah, that's where we are at at this point in uh, space and time. So uh, you know, next month, assuming we go up, say five or six hundred, we'll be at seventy-two thousand. And you're going to have some overlap, but you, you, you tend to see like a very dedicated crowd, for example, on um, Facebook for police. Who might not follow the city account, but there's guaranteed going to be some overlap there.
Got it. It's a lot.
Yeah, for a town this size.
July, wow.
Just want to take a moment to brag on Tom and Clancy. I know sometimes when we uh, talk community engagement, there's a lot of statements that are made to council and myself, uh. Where people say that maybe community engagement hasn't been any, has, hasn't even been any better. It's actually gotten worse. And I think that what you're seeing or people are judging that may be based on what, how they see things or people coming to citizen comments, but. Engagement is more than that. And I think the hard work that you see in Tom's team uh, and Clancy doing, uh, we're showing data that is showing we're reaching new audiences that have never been engaged before. Doesn't mean we're perfect by any stretch of the means. There's always more work to do, but I think it's important to. Celebrate all of this data that we're showing of the engagements that we're having with our community. Uh, to show that our community engagement is much more diverse and definitely bringing in more people.
Can I add on to that? Because I happened to be at the meeting last night, which was contentious. But there was just an awesome moment when the people were complaining the city is not outreach, they're not being transparent and it's impossible to know what's going on. And then we were able to say, they asked the question, how do we get information from the city? And they were able to stand up and say, oh, well, you can click this button and get on a list to get all information and updates, whatever you want. And oh, we had this new website called, you know, Engaged Durango. So. It was very, very effective and it, it, it changed the tone of that room a little bit, which was just awesome.
If there's any information or data for social media that you're curious, I'd be happy to research it.
Um, yes, Tom, you know, I, I attended that meeting also, but um, you know, after reflecting upon everything I heard last night. Um. I think that people just have a hard time, you know, older people looking at the website. So I don't know if there's like a tutorial or a flyer or a handout. You can give them how to get to these areas because the information is out there. But they just don't know how to get to it.
Yeah, I was talking after, after the meeting ended with a lot of people there and I was specifically asking that crowd, who has a cell phone? And of course, everybody did. And I was, I meant to ask the crowd in general, because one of the things we're looking at, as Clancy found, is called a text my gov service. And you can go onto a map and digitally choose which households, which geographic area can, will receive your message. And so that way, everybody, for example, last night, within three hundred feet of, you know, the, the address, we could say, here's our message. And guaranteed everybody last night would have got that because they've all got cell phones. But I hear what you're saying though about the website though. It's still some training.
Well, anyways, thank you. That's good work.
Thank you.
And uh, under strategic workforce development, we have the quarter two workforce update with Bonnie Kling.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem, Council. Bonnie Kling, Human Resources Director here with our recruitment marketing quarter two update. Um, I think Tom already kind of highlighted on this, but uh, our careers page consistently attracts the highest. Volume of user traffic on the City of Durango website. Uh, the second quarter contributed to seventeen, um, seventeen and a half percent of the overall website traffic, which is up about eleven percent from Q one this year. Um, our top traffic sources continued to reflect where we've been sharing our jobs and, and posting our jobs um, out on other websites. That would be governmentjobs.com. Indeed, LinkedIn, Mountain Careers, Handshake, Glass Door and, and a various uh, others. on other websites. That would be governmentjobs.com, Indeed, LinkedIn, Mountain Careers, Handshake, Glass Door, and, and a various others. You know, based on this, you know, on the traffic, we're happy to say that our time to hire is averaging around 39 days, which is 23% faster than our peer organizations in the public sector, which we're benchmarking to, and they're averaging about 52 days. So, and I think it's worth noting that this is 27% faster than Q2 of last year. Our Human Resources Dashboard here, looking at Q2 of last year to Q2 of this year, we're seeing positive trends across our internal promotional rate, up 118%. Transfer from part-time to full-time positions, up 92%. And our jobs over 30 days reflective of, of us efficiently leveraging technology to recruit and get candidates in the door and into their jobs faster. So that's a decrease of 13% there. Our job posting performance, you know, here, continuing the Q2, 23 to Q2, 24 trend. You know, the total number of jobs is down 16%. Total number of applicants is up 33%, so that's a big increase there from 747 to 991. Average applicants per job is up 57%, 7.32 to 11.52. And our high performing jobs this quarter was our GIS analyst. We had 66 applicants, adult services librarian, we had 60 applicants, and our parking enforcement technician, we had 35 applicants. So seeing a lot of volume there. We did have a small dip in our average views per job, but we're, we're accrediting this to fewer job postings and the postings are up for shorter durations because we're getting people in faster. Bryce already touched on this, but in late May through early June, we did have a targeted recruitment out there for the Deputy Chief of Police position. We started sharing the job posting across our standard platforms as well as regional and national job boards. Some of those included Chief of Police job boards in Colorado, Arizona, New Mexico, the FBI National Academy Associates, Associates, the Rocky Mountain Chapter, New Mexico Chapter, Red and Blue Jobs, as well as National Association of Women in Law Enforcement, League of Women, League of Women in Government and Local Government Hispanic Networks, Colorado Municipal League, Texas Municipal League, and more. And then we're also actively sourcing recruitment on LinkedIn. We received 20 qualified applicants, which is to note that this is 25% higher than our average of 15.99 applicants per job for the year to date. So exceeding that, and I will give a big shout out here to Kayla, like Bryce did. She really drove this recruitment and we're really happy with, with the applicants we received. Some recent projects that our HR team's been participating in. We were selected to attend the Fort Lewis College Spring Board Fellowship Network Event. And this was connecting one-on-one with the top 20 performing senior students at Fort Lewis College. We also attended the Fort Lewis College and Samuel College Career Fairs. We partnered up with some other city departments to attend these events. And then looking ahead, you know, we've connected with and, and these organizations, Pueblo Community College and the Durango and Cortez Workforce Centers to attend their job career fairs and events that they'll be hosting coming up. And some other recent projects, we were happy to coordinate with Animus High School and their linked partnership with our IT department. And this is a three-week unpaid mentorship program, providing valuable real-world experience for two students. We had Alex and Liam. Both students excelled in their final projects and the mentors in our IT team found the program equally as rewarding. We look forward to participating and expanding our partnership with Animus High School next spring. And we're also looking to review, expand, and better market our internship opportunities at the city for other students going forward. That's all I have. Any questions? Thank you.